And we're live. Welcome to the March 23rd, 2021 Public Verona Board of Education meeting. We're calling the meeting to order at 7:07. And if everybody will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And the reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 5th, 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Turner, would you like to do the roll call?
Mr. Allworth.
Here.
Mrs. Strapi.
Here.
Mr. Day.
Here.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
And Mrs. Freshy.
I am here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Before we go into Dr. Dionisio's report, I just wanted to make a general statement for the public. So later on in the meeting, before we open the floor to public comment on any items, the public should be aware that the board will be conducting quite a lengthy closed session discussion tonight about topics that include personnel and negotiations. It's anticipated that these discussions will last not less than two hours. Accordingly, pursuant to Board Bylaw 0167, the public comment on any item will be received by the board until 9:00 PM tonight, at which point we will close public comment and move into closed session. So I do want to thank everybody in advance for understanding. We do have a lot of things to discuss tonight. So with that, we are going to move into Dr. Dionisio and the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Freski. Good evening, everyone. Several updates to provide to the board this evening. The first I'd like to start off with is just a recognition and a thank you to our community stakeholders who most recently participated in our Diversity and Equity Committee. We had our first kickoff meeting on Tuesday, March 16th. We are working with over 70 engaged members of the Verona community. This is a very large group, and it was, the meeting was designed to begin our discussions on bias. We spent about an hour and a half, a little bit more, in beginning those discussions. And obviously, we have a lot more work ahead of us over the next several months and several years and ongoing to make sure that we're making Verona the most inclusive place for all of our students, for our staff, and for our community members. Moving forward in April, May, and June, we have scheduled smaller subcommittee meetings that will further examine the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion as it relates to specific themes within our district. Specifically, those subcommittees will be broken up as follows. We will have one subcommittee that will look at curriculum and instruction as well as professional development. A second subcommittee will be exploring recruiting and hiring as well as community outreach. And the last subcommittee will be looking at both district and school climate and culture as well as educational equity. In June, we will also have another subcommittee meeting, so we will have them in April, May, and June. Those meetings will be structured in a way where we have approximately 25, 20 to 25 people on each subcommittee to allow for increased dialogue with committee members. And then we were going to reconvene in June as a full committee again prior to summer. And then over the summer, we have some staff development that is planned, and we're scheduled for that as we then gear ourselves up and work and look forward to what September and the following year looks like as we look to implement tangible goals on an ongoing basis and continue with this important work. Shifting gears, we have tomorrow evening, I will be participating in a Verona Community Health Town Hall that was sent out on behalf of the town. The Essex County Executive, Joe DiVincenzo, will be there, Mr. Cavalo, Chief Kieran, and myself, Steve Portowice from the Moncler Health Department, and Dr. McCarrick of Verona Medical Group. That was advertised, it was sent out last week and the week before, I believe. We have, the information is up on the township website. It begins at 7:00 PM. It will be streamed live, and there will be questions answered in the forum. And then there will be an opportunity for people who are unable to see it live. It will be recorded, so it will be located on multiple websites, including the township. We will also post it up on the Verona website, Verona Public Schools website, and we will have that information accessible for our community members. On the topic of employee vaccinations, we're very proud of the progress that we've made over the past several weeks and several months. So Verona, for those members of our community who are unaware, we have approximately 350 total staff members. At this time, approximately 280 Verona public staff, public school staff members in relation to the vaccine have either scheduled an appointment, have received at least one dose, or have been fully vaccinated. So that currently represents approximately 80% of our total staff. It also represents approximately 97% of our staff who have requested access to the vaccine. And we've been able to coordinate and arrange that because of a number of different reasons. So the success is due largely in part, obviously, to the availability of the actual COVID vaccine from the different pharmaceutical providers. It's also a result of the partnerships with our local health providers who've made those vaccines accessible for appointments as we've prioritized our staff members. Mountainside Hospital has been helpful with us, where we have had some staff members become vaccinated. And I especially want to thank Dr. McCarrick at Vanguard Medical Group for their partnership, where we've been able to have staff members receive the vaccine there as well. I would be remiss if I didn't thank our school nurses, who have been amazing. They've been tremendous throughout this whole year during the pandemic, not only on the day-to-day and their coordination and their work with the teachers and the principals and administration, but with the parents and with the kids, most importantly. And just being able to help us as well with contact tracing and for their medical guidance and their coordination and their support. And on top of it all, being able to also help our faculty, our staff members who are willing to participate in having our nurses actually secure appointments for vaccination. So that's been an immense help for the school district. And I also want to thank Mr. Merkler in all of the work he's been doing with our school nurses and helping guide this process. And last but not least, the testament to so many staff members being vaccinated even prior to Governor Murphy prioritizing our educators and school employees several weeks ago. Just the tenacity of our staff in seeking out those individual opportunities to become vaccinated wherever they could possibly get an appointment has been incredible. So all of those things kind of molded, merged together in order to get us to the point where we're at today. We still have some more work to do, but I'm really proud of the progress and the fact that we're getting more and more people vaccinated. So that's something to really celebrate and be very happy and grateful for. And then last but not least, on the vaccination piece. On Friday, March 19th, I participated with all of the superintendents from Essex County as well as public health officials from the county and public employees at the county office. It was a meeting that our Essex County Executive, Joe DiVincenzo, coordinated. And the purpose of the meeting was to explain and answer questions regarding the vaccination program across the county, but also his work in prioritizing vaccine availability for educators across the entire county. So Friday at 5:00 PM, the Essex County COVID vaccination web link on the county site became live at 5:00 PM to allow teachers to register for an appointment for vaccines. So that kicked off a couple of days ago and has been hugely successful. And they're going to continue with that as the county tries to scale up and get as many teachers and school employees vaccinated as quickly as possible. So kudos to Mr. DiVincenzo for all of his help with that. Shifting gears, but still along the lines of the, of COVID. Very exciting news came, came out last week that we were all waiting in anticipation. The CDC updated guidance, we were very happy and excited to hear what sounds like very promising information. I mean, from the CDC standpoint, to be able to provide an update based on recent research and studies that have been in existence over the past several months in examining the difference between transmission rate for three versus six feet. We were very happy to hear that the science supported the CDC making an update to their recommendations. And that update has been one where elementary, middle, and high school, based on the conditions for transmission in communities, being able to have students three feet apart at a minimum with universal mask wearing in the classroom setting. There are a number of other updates on that guidance. We did share that information out with our community with links to the CDC updated guidance. We are still awaiting updated guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health. So that's the state organization that the Moncler Health Department reports to. But in the meantime, we are still operating at six feet. But we have been planning for a number of weeks as to being able to pivot, to shift to the three feet at the elementary, at the middle school, and at the high school as we await that updated guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health. I also sent a letter out last week to Governor Murphy requesting that the updates from the New Jersey Department of Health, as they're reviewing the guidance, that it comes quickly and as quickly as possible, and that they communicate it as swiftly as possible. So school districts may move as fast as possible in order to be able to safely increase in-person learning. We're not waiting for that announcement in order to prepare ourselves. We are waiting for that announcement in order to be able to actually act upon it. So as I mentioned earlier, as of today, so far, the New Jersey Department of Health has not yet provided any updated guidance. I did check today with the Moncler Health Department. We're still awaiting that, so we're still operating at six feet. In addition to that, when we're taking a look at what this means for each of our grade levels, at the elementary grade level, we will be able to, when the Department of Health gives an updated guidance that three feet is permissible, we will be able to, as a school district, within a few short days, be able to shift towards three feet in our classrooms, and that's what we're preparing for. So that would be one cohort where all students will be able to come in from 8:30 to 12:30 every day. And the remote option is still available for any family that chooses to keep their children home and learning remotely. As I mentioned, universal mask wearing is still going to be required. The three feet of distancing is only from student to student. Six feet of distancing is still required from staff member or adult to adult, and also from adult to student. So the three feet guidance only applies to students. The district is planning for all this possibility and all possibilities as we await this guidance. The one update that I do want to provide, and this was in my, the weekly update that we provided on March 20th, is the stipulation around middle school and high school students. So we're hopeful that the CDC guidance will allow for three feet. But at this time, at least the way it appears from the guidance, the six feet is still going to be required in communities where transmission is high. If cohorting is not possible. Now, we are exploring the cohorting piece, at least at the middle school, to see if that's a possibility. At this time, we don't have enough guidance, but it is something that we are exploring. At this time, we do not believe that that is going to be possible, but we are looking into it. And the transmission being high is still based on the COVID activity reports that we receive from the New Jersey Department of Health that we've provided links to as far as what the community transmission is based on the regional risk matrix by the grouping of the counties that are within each region. So we will still be preparing our administrative staff. And our staff has been informed that, you know, we're going to continue to follow the New Jersey Department of Health guidance. We're hoping that that comes soon. In the meantime, our elementary principals did today send out an updated survey and letter to our elementary parents in anticipation of the updated guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health. And that survey is asking parents to let us know by March 25th what their intention would be, if the guidance changes, when the change is from six to three feet, if they intend on sending their children into school for the remainder of the school year. That's important information for us to know, just so we could plan accordingly in the classrooms. But regardless of what the return rate on that is, even if it's 100%, we will be able to get all elementary students into our classrooms at three feet. At HBW, Mr. Galbercheck and Mrs. McNeil have continued to work with their staff. I've been meeting with Dr. Miller, our elementary principals, our administrators, and our teachers on multiple committees, getting feedback, talking about all kinds of different possibilities. Aside from the updated CDC guidance, we've been working on that for a number of weeks, coming off of the committee feedback from parents and survey feedback, and just looking to see what are the areas that we can continue to evolve to increase the amount of in-person time for our students. The one thing that's most promising at HBW right now, a recent survey went out to parents. Mr. Galbercheck and Mrs. McNeil are examining that survey feedback. I do know that they had a meeting last night with the parent committee and the teacher committee to provide an update and get some feedback as to the progress that we're making and the feedback that they've received from this group. One of the areas that HBW is striving towards is moving from, potentially from a three cohort model, three separate days, to a two cohort model. So our students in HBW, the hope is that we would get students in every other day rather than every three days. Mr. Galbercheck and Mrs. McNeil are working on those details, they're examining that, and they will provide an update to the HBW community in the short, in the near future. And as far as Verona High School, Mr. Cogdill and Mr. Lancaster are working with our staff, with our advisors, and with our student groups and parents in order to plan for the end-of-the-year activities. Of course, following all of the guidelines from the state of New Jersey, the DOH, DOE, and getting clarification on those points. We are also looking at ways as to which we can continue to evolve the schedule there for more in-person time. So I've had a lot of conversations as, as well as Mr. Cogdill and Mr. Lancaster with our staff around how that may be possible, much of that work stemming from committee work. And right now, Verona High School is at a two-day, two-cohort system. A new survey will be going out shortly to collect more feedback from parents as to what the intentions will be for the remainder of the school year to be able to build the number of cohorts. So we're hoping that we can at least stay at that two-cohort model, but that will be predicated based on the number of responses and requests for in-person learning. In addition to that, we are also looking at and exploring what potentially, based on the cohorts that do report to school, what the possibility is of having an open campus potentially for lunch, outdoor lunch, and then also to be able to provide an opportunity for in-person learning by cohort in the afternoon. So these are all conversations that have been occurring and taking a look at the logistics and the operational issues and getting closer to where that communication will be formally coming. It's been discussed with students and get, collecting feedback and surveys and discussed with staff as we're looking at all of these issues. So that kind of concludes where we are currently at. And just to wrap up with, with this piece of the CDC update, and just to reiterate, we are still waiting for the six feet versus the three feet guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health. And we're calling every day, and we're trying to make sure that we're getting a response as quickly as possible, and we're preparing for that possibility of moving to three feet in our schools when it's safe and when it's recommended. And then last but not least, I provided an update to the community a few days ago in regards to the survey that went out to the community for the potential restructuring of the elementary schools if it were necessary for next year. We don't believe that it will be necessary based on the direction that the district and, that we're moving in and with the hope of more people becoming vaccinated and looking at what September would present itself as and what the New Jersey Department of Health guidance may be. This may not be as necessary of exploration as it perhaps was a month ago as things evolve and they change. However, we, we did want to share that the, the feedback was received. Only the survey feedback from parents who will have children in school in kindergarten through fourth grade next year was considered. It was an approximate return rate on the surveys of two-thirds, approximately 66, 67% of the families, unique families responded. Only one vote per household was considered. And 75% of the families who responded supported the district at least exploring the consideration and the development of a plan, a proposal for the future. If it was an area that seemed like it would be possible to increase the amount of number, the number of students in our classrooms if we had to maintain the six feet of physical distancing. Of course, with this new CDC guidance at three feet, that seems like an issue that we may not have to grapple with. But at least it's good to get this feedback from the community. And if it's something that we have to revisit in the future, then we can certainly do that. But at this time, it does not seem to be the case. And that's all I have for the superintendent report this evening, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Freski at this point.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dionisio. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Dionisio on his superintendent's report?
Yeah, I just had, I had a quick comment, and thank you, Dr. Dionisio, for the detailed report. And regarding the CDC, I mean, that is good news about the three feet. I was just curious, and again, I hadn't tracked all the CDC adjustments and changes to what they've done. But in the past, the CDC has made recommendations, and that eventually trickles down to the New Jersey Department of Health. Do we recall what the timeframe was when CDC made adjustments to, was it a couple of days, a week? Do we recall of any, when that change was made previously? How long it took for DHOH and Moncler Department of Health to have it trickle down, so to speak?
I don't have the answer to that. I'd have to, I could go and take a look at that and see and speak to. It probably wouldn't be that hard to figure out because all of the updates are dated on the website, and we could certainly look at that.
If you look at history and say it's been, it takes three days for them to make that decision or a week, potentially, we might have something from them sooner than later. I mean, ended a day, I know, I know they thought they base everything off region and about that, all the regions. But I look at Verona, we control Verona, and that's sort of where I want to see. If the CDC does what they say, you know, to go to three feet, and then Department of Health, New Jersey. And I appreciate you sending a note to Governor Murphy and emailing the Department of Health. And I just, everything seems a little slow and, you know, not on our end, but on the fact that the way the government's working right now to be able to make those pivots and make those changes. So, but I know, I appreciate the fact you have a plan in place that we're ready to make the move when we get guidance. So, but again, I just wanted to see in past history how long it took to trickle down to the Department of Health. And I know it's a little bit of political football out there with some of the things going on. And I think everybody out in the public's aware of that, you know, we on the board and, and, you know, we don't really control that, the administration does. But end of the day, as you know, the administration's doing everything, everything they can. And as you, you know, I have two high schoolers, and you know, the fact they went down to two cohorts was great. And all the fact that they're working on the elementary schools, trying to get them, reduce the number of cohorts, you know, do whatever, in the middle school, and then we'll work with the elementary schools to get everybody in every day. So, so again, I just wanted to make that statement, so.
Yeah, so, and just to piggyback off that, Mr. Day, I could certainly look into it, and I will. I think the frustration by this group here, by us, by our parents, and by most school districts is that we would like answers a lot faster than we're getting them. And there's a sense of urgency to get more kids back into school every single day. We're trying to expedite that as best we can on our end to be prepared. So when that announcement is made, it decreases the amount of time for us to be able to, to have that pivot. And, and we're going to continue to call every single day, and hopefully, the Department of Health will give us guidance. And, and I would hope that, you know, perhaps the Department of Health is looking and examining all of this and looking at how it relates to New Jersey schools. But I would hope that if they had the information available, perhaps with the elementary schools, that they could at least release the elementary piece first, because the CDC guidance has been pretty clear that three feet is permissible regardless of what the transmission rate is within a community. It's, it's definitely different for middle school and high school. So if the transmission rate in the region or in the area, how it's defined, and that's, if it's in high, then the six-feet rule has to still be in play. So that guidance on the six-foot distancing would still be in play. But that's not the case based on what the CDC just reported for the elementary school. So I'm hopeful that they're going to move at least quickly enough on that. And then if they have to provide updated guidance on the middle school and high school, then that can come later on. So I hope that we hear that from the Department of Health and from the State Department of Health and from Governor Murphy sooner than later.
Okay, and the other component is, you know, as everybody's aware, of course, we want to, that's great news that the, the staff is being vaccinated, but I think that's critical too. To make that move, you want to, you know, say we have elementary go every day. You want to make sure that every teacher and staff member in those elementary schools either has, you know, has the opportunity to have the vaccine, if they don't want the vaccine, that's fine. But at least has that opportunity to get it before you open up the school, so. So again, we worry about the students and the staff, so.
Yeah. And I think it's going to be interesting, you know, if and when, like you said, the timeline, that it trickles down to the state, but also if they are going to make any differentiation on individual communities as opposed to regions, because that's going to have an impact as well. So everybody's hoping for the best.
At the end of the day, we only control our, we only control our district. You can't control everybody else's, if they do whatever they want to do, that's fine, we control our districts.
And just to kind of echo what Jim and Lisa, you know, were saying, is that, I guess personally, one concern that I have is that making sure that when we do make that move to three feet, I know teachers still have to stay six feet. You know, that can be more challenging when you have more students in your room. So, you know, personally, from, with my teacher hat on, I would just want to make sure that, you know, we have as many teachers as possible with their second vaccine in their arms, you know, before we like 100% committed to that. But that may also be, from what I can see, maybe why the Department of Health may be taking their time. I'm just pontificating here, I don't know that for sure. You know what I mean, just making sure that we have enough of those teachers who are fully vaccinated by then. But also to echo what Lisa was saying, you know, I don't know if, if you can shed any light to this, and this is actually a question that I submitted for tomorrow night's forum, I'm sorry, informational session, was why do, like, why are we in that, like, region? Why are they using that matrix and not like the county matrix that shows us a low transmission rate? Even though we had nine positives yesterday in the whole community, which I still think is a lot, but that's my personal thing. But, you know, do they, have they given a reason why the Department of Health and New Jersey Department of Health, Moncler Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health uses that regional matrix from the state rather than the county one?
Why they use a regional matrix as far as low, moderate, high, and very high, with that case rate is?
Based on the regional matrix from the state, we're still in a high region. And a lot of that is because some of the larger areas that surround us that may not be directly adjacent to our community have still very high positivity rates. And that's, that's kind of negatively impacting our ability to move forward, I feel like. Whereas if you look at the county matrix, we're actually considered a low transmission rate. And a lot of the adjacent communities around us, I think with the exception of Montclair and maybe West Orange are also considered low. So have they given you like any?
No, the only thing I was provided that superintendents were provided is the level of information is regarding, it's just coordinated regionally, right? The three counties nearby, there's any which way that they could piece that puzzle together. And they decided to group us with the two counties and and that's where we stand. And that's what they are sticking with as far as this COVID activity reporting that they push out. And and that's, I don't know if that's, I would imagine that at least for now, we know that that's the model that they're using. It would be interesting to see if they continue with that with updated guidance. Or they reserve the right to be able to shift and make a different decision if they so choose. The governor can make that decision with Persicelli at the Department of Health and all of the other people at that level that would partake in that conversation and what the rationale would be. Aside from the fact that they're regionally adjacent to one another and the way they group them, that's the only information that's been provided to us.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just a simple comment, I just really hope if they end up not following the CDC that they have a really good explanation for it. Because we're all, you know, I think everyone, the whole community, us, everybody, you know. Exactly. I mean, if they, if they don't go with it, they better have a real good explanation. Because I think the whole community and the whole state's ready to to get to get rolling, so hopefully.
And so just for a commercial for the informational session tomorrow night, let's attend that. Because I think hopefully we'll get some answers and get some, some questions answered, so. Thanks.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. D'Oneseo. We're going to, we don't have any presentations this evening, so we're going to move on to committee reports. There was no finance report, so we submitted the preliminary budget on time. And there's nothing new to report on that. And Community Resources, we did meet today. Mr. Day was unable to join us, so Mrs. Prisco joined on the Community Resources call. And there was really one topic that we need to report out to the board and to the public. There was a meeting request by Dr. Tamboro, and he was joined by Mr. Dupree. The meeting was requested for Dr. D'Oneseo with the attendance of Mr. Allworth to discuss elementary school schedule. And this meeting took place on Friday, March 12th, early evening, 5:15. And in attendance was Dr. D'Oneseo, myself, Dr. Miller as Director of Curriculum, Dr. Lanzo and Mr. Monticelli as the VAA co-presidents and elementary school principals, building principals. And the focus of the meeting primarily was Dr. Tamboro made a proposal based on informal conversations with the staff that they were expressing comfort in relaxing the six foot recommendation. People are feeling more comfortable with the rollout of vaccines and we listened with open ears. But coming off our last meeting, we, Dr. D'Oneseo reiterated that our position at the time is still waiting for the updated guidance from the New Jersey State Department of Health, which eventually trickles down to the Montclair Department of Health. So at that point, the guidance still hasn't changed. And as we heard, the CDC moved the needle a little bit. And we are still awaiting guidance. So hopefully, at this point, as guidance comes through, as we just discussed, we will be able to see some changes. Did you have anything to add, Mrs. Prisco or Mr. Allworth on that?
Yeah, I just thought it was really, you know, nothing, unfortunately, we weren't able to to go with anything until we get the green light. You know, from the Department of Health, but it was good to hear, you know, everyone's continuing to work together. Everyone realizes how important it is, especially for the elementary to get in. You know, the teachers feeling more comfortable obviously makes us feel, you know, a little more comfortable going forward. And yeah, hopefully we get this green light in the next day or two. I'm certainly optimistic that it's coming soon. I don't know about everybody else, but.
I'm cautiously optimistic.
Cautiously optimistic.
Cautiously optimistic.
But, um, but yeah.
Is there any questions or comments on that from anybody? If no, we are going to have, right now, we're going to open it up to public comments on agenda action items to be approved this evening. And the, to remind the public, if you have a question or comment on an agenda item, to please state your name and your address. And I'm going to ask Mr. Roberts to open the line for that. And I am going to mute.
I show no hands for a public comment on action items on.
We did not see any hands up for public comment on agenda items, so we are going to continue on. Are there any discussion items on new or old business that anyone on the board would like to bring up? I'm just going to toss out there. In the spirit of the board, and we had our goals on, and one of them was, you know, to keep ourselves up to the minute on professional development and personal development. Pam and I, Mrs. Prisco and I attended the Essex County of New Jersey School Boards Association, Association meeting last week. And it was really well attended and it's always nice to get out of your echo chamber and your own community and hear what's going on across the state. And the format was really nice because they did breakout sessions this time. So they had really small groups and you get to talk to people from all over the state. And it's attended by superintendents, principals, board members, representatives from the New Jersey School Board Association facilitating it. So I think we both found it to be a really, really good worthwhile meeting. So I would encourage board members as these meetings pop up. If you have a free night, they're very timely. They start on time, they finish on time, and I think they're worthwhile. So I just wanted to add that.
Mrs. Fresh, I'd just like to add on that too. Speaking with the other districts as well, you see other districts that are exactly experiencing everything we are sitting here. So it was nice to kind of, you know, hear from other people and see what they're doing and see how their wheels are spinning and same kind of ideas. And also was very impressed with a board member from Milburn. He is a senior, well, he was a senior last year in Milburn High School. And he's on his second year as a board member. And he spoke unbelievably, he was just, kudos to him. And, you know, he was really very impressive, very impressive. But it was very informative and it was nice to interact with the other districts to see what everyone's doing and just trying to get ideas and go from there. So it's interesting. Thank you.
Board comment.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Sona for his retirement as the head night custodian for VHS. Congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you very much for that call out. And the other thing I just want to comment on is the One District, One Book. And just say thank you for delivering my book to me. And I am thoroughly enjoying my trip through the pine barrel this year. Yeah, it's great. It's great. So it's, you know, it's those little things that kind of give us encouragement to keep moving.
Right, this is, this is a big thing. This is a really, it's a huge undertaking from Mrs. Walker and Ms. Frida every year. And thank you to the Verna Foundation for Educational Excellence for sponsoring this every year. And we really look forward to it, and it was such a wonderful shining light that came through to us like while it was still pretty dark out at night, you know, early on. So we look forward to it every night with our kids. It really is so wonderful. Thank you.
How many years is the One Dish of One Book going now?
Oh, it's longer. It, it, it's at least seven. I've been here seven years, so it's at least seven.
Wow, it's great. I love it.
Could be longer.
I love it.
Fresh, can I just add one quick thing also for, today was his last day, Mr. Carrato at the middle school. So I would just, I think we may have mentioned when he put in his couple of months ago. When, but today was his officially, his last day at the middle school. I think he was a phys ed teacher there for fourteen plus years, plus he went to all the HBW. So he will be greatly missed, but I wish him all the best and his family. So thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And I just want to do a shout out for on one of the addendum items, Mrs. Silva is leaving the district. She will be missed. She was, well, currently is the guidance counselor for both of my, my children. And she's done a wonderful job, very impressed when I put on my parental hat. I learn a lot when I go sit down in a room and talk to her when we talk about, you know, my children. So I want to thank her, wish her well, and again, you will be missed.
Thank you for that. And is there anything else? Okay, so we are going to move on to roll call to vote on resolutions. So I need a motion to move resolutions number one through nine. Move by Mrs. Drappi.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prisco. Is there any discussion on any of those agenda items? No, I don't think so either. Okay, then I'm going to ask Mr. Turner, so please do a roll call.
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Fresh.
Yes.
The motion's passed.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we have addendum resolutions this evening as well. So we are going to first look at addenda resolutions number one through 10. I need a motion to, for the approval of one through 10. Move by Mrs. Drappi. Second by Mr. Day. And are there any discussions on those?
I just saw that a lot of, some of the grant money is being used for some of the projects. So I thought that was moving in the right direction and able to take advantage of that money that's being used in the proper capacity. So just wanted to flag that out.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Turner, will you please do the roll call?
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Fresh.
Aye.
The motion's passed.
Thank you very much. And then we have a separate addenda item, resolution number one. And Mr. Turner is going to fill us in with some details in regard to that.
All right, this is in regards to the referendum. Resolve that the board approve a change order for Asbury Construction in the following manner. Original contract amount, three hundred sixty two thousand, five hundred forty three dollars. Previous change order amount, seventeen thousand, five hundred twelve dollars, fifty two cents. Current change order, a negative or reduction of ninety thousand dollars for a final contract amount of two hundred ninety thousand, fifty five dollars and fifty two cents. Resolve that the board reduce payment application number four from one hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred sixty three dollars to net eighty thousand, eight hundred sixty three thousand. And approve same. Resolve that the business office and attorney shall take all actions necessary to effectuate the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I need a motion to approve addenda resolution number one. Moved by Mrs. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mr. Day. Are there any questions in regard to that?
Do we want to explain to the public? I mean, basically, this is allowing us to get ninety thousand dollars cost reduction due to the contractor delays, correct? That's the reason why.
Yeah, and that was in regard to the masonry, the steps at all the schools. Okay. All right, so that was great. Thank you very much. And Mr. Turner, will you please do the roll call to vote?
Mr. Allworth.
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Sure, yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
And Mrs. Fresh.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to, wait one second, let me get back to my main page. We're going to open up for public comments, and I'm just going to read the statement again for any members of the public that jumped on a little late. So before opening the Florida public comment on items that you might want to discuss, the public should be aware that the board will be conducting a lengthy closed session discussion on topics including personnel and negotiations. We anticipate that these discussions will last not less than two hours. Accordingly, pursuant to the board bylaw zero one six seven, the public comment on open items will be received by the board until nine PM. At which whoop, excuse me, at which point we will close the public comment and move on into closed session. So I want to just thank everybody in advance for understanding. We do have a lot of things to discuss tonight. And when you come, yes.
Yes. I apologize, I made an error before my statement about the One District, One Book. It was the VEA who sponsored it, not the Verna Foundation for Educational Excellence. I just wanted to make that correction. I apologize for the mistake.
Thank you, Mrs. Drappi. I just want to remind the public when you speak to please state your name and your address. And I am going to ask Mr. Roberts, and we do have a five minute per person limit. And we are going to adhere to that. So Mr. Roberts will give a thirty second warning before the five minutes is up as we move forward. And I am going to mute. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
All right, first up is Lynette Matheson.
Hi, this is Lynette Matheson at Eleven Wilton Terrace. I, I'm glad to see my hand is working tonight. I had it raised the whole last meeting. I updated my Zoom tonight. So I just want to talk a little bit about the high school population. From the last Board of Ed meeting, I think it's clear that we're sensing there's a little bit of an urgency from parents to we need help inspiring our kids to get back to school. I do have a daughter that's a junior. She has been going in for in-person learning. And it has been less than desirable. I did speak to Mr. Cogdill this past week, and I won't spend too much time talking about that. But the one thing I wanted to ask, I know we recently sent out a survey, which I am thrilled that you finally decided to reach out directly to these teens, because I will say that going to them to ask what they're feeling, what they maybe want, could make all the difference in the world. Even if what you see in that survey, which I will be so excited to see what is, what really came back. Even if it's not exactly what we want to see. I think just them having a chance to hear their, you know, have their voice heard is going to make a big difference. But if it doesn't, and those numbers still look very low as to which students plan to return. I just want to ask if you have some ideas as to how you're going to help reengage these students. Because it is becoming a problem. And also one other thing, so that's the one thing. Also, can you speak openly about what you really are requiring of teachers as far as those room configurations? I couldn't really get a straight answer this past week. I know we're trying to inspire the teachers to have their rooms set up in a way that would mean the students are not sitting on those screens all day long. But I really, I really need to hear from someone that that's going to change. You know, to even finish this year, and if we go into next year and, you know, the governor just says, hey, we're still offering remote learning, I cannot imagine students sitting there in a hybrid setting for another whole school year. So those are my two questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will, and I'll speak to it, and I'll also have Mr. Dr.
I will, and I'll speak to it, and I'll also have Mr. Dr. Miller speak to the second question as well regarding the, the room configurations. I can definitely speak to that because of my conversations with Mr. Cogdill and Mr. Lancaster, and also teachers on the committees that we've had a lot of conversation with. So obviously, being in the hybrid, we definitely recognize the challenge that that is for our students. We definitely recognize the challenge that that is for our teachers as well in trying to live in this world of the, the students who are in the classroom and the students who are home. And in most instances, not all, but in most instances, at the high school, we have a lot of kids who are home, a lot of our students who are home. So teaching in the classroom to a few students and then having a majority of the students at home makes it quite challenging. It does vary teacher by teacher, and, and that varies because of the teacher's teaching style and also by, it's predicated by the number of students who are in the classrooms. There are some classrooms that only have a few students, and there are other classrooms that have 10 or 12 or 13 students in them. So when you have more students in the classroom, obviously, that creates a different atmosphere. And whether or not the teacher has the students there, based on the lesson that they're delivering, with the students having their, the Chromebooks or their computers open. It is something that the administration is aware of. It is something that our teachers are aware of, and it's something that we've had conversations around. And our hope is, is that as, as we're able to recalibrate and the number of students coming into our schools, into school on a regular basis through the cohorts, that we're going to be able to get more students in and be able to change that classroom environment where the, the teacher is teaching a, a larger number of students, which definitely plays into significantly in what that classroom experience feels like, which from listening to our students and, and getting feedback from them, that's something that they're definitely missing. They're missing the normalcy of school. They're missing their friends in, not only in life, but also in a, in the classroom setting. There is a social component to that, just being in school and being in class. And the six feet of distancing has definitely hampered that. And that's why we're looking at ways that we can reengage our students as well, that if the six feet of distancing is still in play and a guideline for the high school, and it very well may be, what are the things that we can do? Can we adjust the cohorts so that way the students who commit to coming in person actually do show up, so we can really make sure that our cohorts are tight? And that the kids who are coming into school are coming in consistently, excuse me, and that we're also looking at the opportunity to create this avenue for the afternoon to expand that in-person time. And, and also for the socialization in the middle of the day outside as the weather gets warmer for our students to reengage. So there are logistical issues, there are operational issues, scheduling issues. We still have to send an update that'll be coming out shortly to our parents, but thank you, Mrs. Matheson. It's definitely something that has resonated, is something that we're listening to. It's, we're hearing that message, and we're working on that to try to make it better for our kids.
Dr. Dini Cio, can I just quickly piggyback off of what she's saying here? I think, because I think her questions are definitely related, right? How do we reengage the students? And I think a big part of that is showing that the, that they're in school, it is a more engaging experience, right? They go hand in hand. What are the teachers saying that is their biggest obstacle in, in the high school classrooms? You know what I mean? Like, I know from my elementary perspective, but I I'm having a hard time understanding, like, what are their biggest obstacles in order to teach to both to keep the kids at home and to the kids in the classroom? What are they saying?
I, I think it varies by teacher. Some teachers are, they have their cameras up, and there's, there are instances where the students are not on the computers when they're in the classroom. And that's dictated by the, the type of lesson. The subject area. And, you know, the delivery of that, and how many students are in the classroom. When you're having discussions in the classroom, perhaps group discussions, it's difficult to have group discussions when you only have two or three students in the classroom. That looks very different when it's 10 or 12 students in the classroom. And the students at home are participating. So I think from what the teachers have shared, that's a really big piece.
Okay.
The other piece is, you know, trying to teach into, this, these two media are very diffi- difficult. And that hybrid piece, no matter what grade level you're teaching, is, is posing the challenge. So I think some teachers are doing an outstanding job of it. And other teachers, I, I think all of our teachers are, based on the circumstances that they're currently grappling with.
But it depends on what you're teaching.
It, it really does. If you're teaching a course that's heavily dependent upon technology, then it lends itself very nicely.
Right.
But if you're, if you're dealing with discussion-based or different activities that typically take place in the classroom, there's a lot of variety that goes into how you plan accordingly around that.
Are they saying that they need something? Like, is there something that they need, like technology, equipment, that like?
You know, the, the challenge, so the, the biggest piece of, the biggest part of the conversation that we've had is if we can get all the kids in.
Right.
That's the best case scenario.
Right.
Pedagogically, instructionally.
Right.
The second best option is all the kids remote.
Right.
Because now you're teaching to one medium, right? But that's not ideal either. So we're kind of, not only because we want kids in person, but we also have the requirement of keeping remote, for good reason, because we're in the middle of a pandemic. And that's going to be here at a minimum through the rest of this year. We don't know what next year will bring, but it may possibly be here next year. So we, we have to kind of look at all of those things. And it's that hybrid piece that's a real, a real push and pull.
Okay.
Dr. Miller, is there anything that perhaps you could add to that, that we haven't covered?
No, I think you've said it all. When you have two students in class and you have 20 at home, you teach to the students at home, and unfortunately, the students in class, they have their computer. That's how they can interact with the students who are home. So I talked to Mr. Cogdill as well, like, the more students that come in, the easier it will be for our teachers to transition. They've been used to doing this for a majority of the year. So they also have a flow of doing this, and the kids are used to using the technology. So I think when we get more kids back, I think we'll have more opportunities for collaboration. Hopefully, we can get students closer than six feet. And I think, I think we'll see teachers change. But until then, I don't think you're going to see that much of a difference.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. And I'll also add to that, that the communication that will be coming out from the high school in the next few days, as we start to, start finishing up, tightening up, you know, at least the tentative plans of trying to look ahead, and we're still working some things out, is going to provide a, provide a level of detail, so that way parents can make informed decisions as to what, what modality works best for their child. And we hope that with that communication and making those adjustments, that if you want to be fully remote, you're fully remote. If you want to be fully in, you're fully in. But at least this way, we can try to create a better experience based on true cohort numbers and increase as many students as we can safely in the school. And, and hopefully, that will contribute to a, a different experience for our students in the classroom setting.
Okay, next is Paula DeVito.
Mrs. DeVito, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Paula DeVito, 90 Woodland Avenue. I literally, I just have one question, but I, I do want to, after hearing the, the few callers that just called in, I just want to point out the one word that I keep hearing is the, the reengage. So when we're talking about reengaging the students, I, I have to say, the seniors have really had a rough year. They have not really had any in-person time at all. And the other thing I wanted to point out was, they literally have about, I don't know, six, seven weeks left before they start their, their capstone. So at that time of the year, you're going to end up with, you know, a bunch of extra spaces, right, in the school that, that may actually work out for the underclassmen. But again, the students, you know, the seniors will have only, you know, been in school, you, you know the deal, right? Like, I don't know, a year and a half, they haven't even been in school. But I just wanted to point that out about the fact that they're going to be gone, like, you know, in about a month or so. So I'm not sure, you know, what the plan is for some, you know, additional activities like College Day, things like that. But the question I was going to ask, and you, you kind of stated it early on, is about the confirmation about the end of year activities. So if anything were to happen, do you guys have a Plan B in place for, you know, prom and banquet and, and stuff like that, so that we can, you know, get something for these kids?
Thank you, Mrs. DeVito. I echo your sentiments. I know that our teachers and that class advisors, the club advisors and the high school administration feel the same way. We all do. And it is very, it, it is unfortunate that this is the senior year that our seniors have had. It certainly is something that does not fall on deaf ears. We have board members who have seniors. You know, I have a senior who graduated last year, and his experience was cut short, but it was nothing like the experience of our current seniors. We're committed to trying to reengage and get our students into school in person as much as possible. And that's why we are looking at this afternoon section of in-person learning with an open campus during the middle of the day, person socialization for that critical piece that we know is so important. And to give them something to look forward to in the coming months, as, as well as the high school's been working with parent groups, with our student groups, with our advisors around planning for proms, senior banquets, doing this all by the guidelines and making sure it's safe, but trying to give our students, our seniors especially, but giving all of our students that experience, and also some outdoor, as the weather improves, outdoor events that will be social and safe and fun for them, and, and trying to take advantage of all of those opportunities, and coming up with what Plan A is and what Plan B is, and, and making sure that we're, we're doing it safely, but to try to return some normalcy for them in, in their final months here at Verona High School. They definitely deserve it. So we are working on that, and it's, it's around the clock in making sure that our, our staff is, is prepared for that. I know the, the administration at the high school has been committed to that and, and working with our students and our staff and our parents on that.
Thanks. Okay, next is Dan Vecchio.
Mr. Vecchio, you're on mute.
Mr. Vecchio, going once? Going twice? Okay, moving on. Next is Anya Singleton.
Hi, Anya Singleton, 33 Brookdale Ave. I just wanted to ask a quick question. I'm an elementary school parent, and especially in light of what looks like they may be moving to one cohort. I know a lot of people have been frustrated that the kids can't use the playground during the school day. And that's been really hard for the kids, especially because for some of our schools, we have like a private preschool that uses the facilities, and they see them doing so outside of their classroom windows. So I was curious if that's going to change with the reduced guidance, if the kids would, since they would still be masked and they could use hand sanitizer before and afterwards, be actually permitted to use the playgrounds during school as opposed to just having to use it the minute school ends?
Thank you, Mrs. Singleton. So that is something that we are in discussions over. The use of the playgrounds, and, and they're beautiful and they're wonderful, and we want our students to be able to start using them on a regular basis during school hours. But the, the limiting factor there has been the six feet of distancing mostly. The touch point surfaces was something early on, but the transmission within six feet was something that was more of a concern. But that is something now that we are looking at, because we want to be able to provide that opportunity for our students. So that is something that's on our agenda to see if we can restore. And having some guidelines around how many students would be on those playgrounds at a certain time. But this way, our students can use those during some recess time during, throughout the day.
Okay, Kristy Ruggiero.
Mr. Ruggiero, you're on mute.
Going once? Going twice? All right, moving on. All right, Dan Vecchio, we're back to you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry about that the first time. Dan Vecchio, 36 West Lincoln Street. Lisa and Pam, you both indicated you went to some kind of conference with other districts, and you had breakouts with them. I'm wondering if any of those school districts decided not to be bound by that six-foot recommendation by the CDC, and before the CDC changed it and the DOH? And if, or if they are planning or were planning on it in the future? And what their plan was, and why they decided to go with that, and they, you know, don't have the, that fear of liability if they did choose to go, go in that direction?
Thank you, Mr. Vecchio. So the breakout rooms that I were in, that I was in, nobody went against the six-foot recommendation. All the districts that were speaking and represented were adhering to it. There are districts that have much smaller populations and school communities. There were some districts that were only K through six or K through eight, and they have different spaces, newer school buildings with larger classrooms. So there were instances where people did have students in five days a week, but they had different circumstances. Anybody who had number issues and physical space issues, everybody was adhering to the six foot. I don't know if Mrs. Prisco and her breakout rooms had a different experience.
Everyone that I spoke to in our breakout room was similar, very similar to situations here in Verona, and abiding, you know, waiting on the guidance as well from their Department of Health. So it was, you know, just trying to get different ideas from different people, but we were all in the same, pretty much on the same boat.
I've done this before. So did you, I just wanted to make sure I understood this clearly, that the folks who did not adhere to the six feet were smaller towns, or that
No, they were.
They were adhering to the six.
They were adhering to the six.
But they were able to get inside.
Able to get.
Correct.
Okay, Lynn Halsey.
Hi, Lynn Halsey, 53 Lyndon Avenue. I just wanted to ask, with the CDC recommendations, prior to that happening, we had been talking about possibly piloting a program in elementary school that would bring students in for lunch or sending them home for lunch. And I just wanted to know if with the change in the guidelines, which obviously, you know, six, six feet down to three is, is the ideal. But just what, what would happen to that program? Is it something that we're still talking about, looking at for fall? And the second question that I had was, excuse me, in regards to the fifth graders, in a lot of towns, children that are in fifth grade are still in elementary school. So when you're looking at the CDC guidance by elementary and by middle school, are you doing it specifically by building, or is there any possibility for, you know, looking at the fifth graders as kind of like a separate, a separate demographic within the middle school? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Halsey. So very good questions. Thank you for that. So I'll start with your first question first. So we, we were through our committees continuing to explore that, that piece about whether we were going to send, have the option at the elementary level to send students home for lunch and then to come back based on that designated cohort day. That did pose a significant number of challenges for a number of parents from the feedback we've received. Favorable for some parents, not so favorable for others. It does throw a little bit of a monkey wrench in the, in the afternoon sessions that are currently designed. We are still exploring other options that we've been in discussions with over the past several weeks in looking at how we can involve the schedule to try to increase the in-person time. Prior to us hearing that the CDC was considering updating their guidelines around reducing it from six feet to three feet. Those discussions are still taking place and those plans are still taking place. In the event that, and we have a high level of confidence, I'm hopeful, cautiously optimistic, like we're all saying here, that at the elementary level, that the Department of Health is going to hopefully shift to that three feet, which solves a lot of the issues at the elementary level. And that's the most ideal and least disruptive to our families and to our teachers and to our kids. So that's the ideal, but we are looking ahead and still planning something for the end of April, should that not be the case. I personally don't believe that that's going to happen. I'm hopeful that within the next few days, that we're going to be able to get some new information here and be able to be prepared to move forward with the three feet at the elementary school. But we are still working on those other plans that have been in motion, just ironing out details. The second question you had around fifth grade and considering them to be elementary school is a, is a great question. It is something that we've had conversations around. We've actually not just limited our conversations to just fifth grade, but we've also looked at, you know, is cohorting available and possible at the middle school? A lot of the cohorting piece, you know, the fifth graders are in their own wing. The fact that they're in their own wing, can we do something that keeps them as a cohort? That we do have a house model, it's structured around teams. Does that allow us to incorporate a cohort model? We would need more guidance on that from the Department of Health. And the reason for that is, is if we think about our elementary schools, the same, I'll make up a classroom enrollment population, the same 20 or 22 students are together self-contained in that room for most of the day. That's a cohort. There's very little mingling that you can control at this point. You can control the, the commingling of students in that capacity during the current circumstances that we're in. Even though we have teens, the way the middle school is designed and the complexities around above level, at level, special education, cross-house, specials and languages, and the fact that, you know, the, the fifth grade Olmsted, the group of students in social studies then mixes, and it's not the same group that goes to the next core class. That by definition may not meet the cohort definition in the sense of a pandemic. It does meet it in the sense of developing small, nurturing, close-knit learning communities within our schools, but it may not meet that cohort definition. But that's not to say that we've ruled that out. We are exploring that. Mr. Galbercheck and I have had conversations over the weekend about that. And that is something that we are going to continue to look at to see if there's some promise there. And if, if there is, can we do it safely? And does it meet the cohorting definitions? So as of right now, we don't have an answer to that, but we're going to continue to look at it.
Next is Joanna Gagas.
Hello. I had a chance to ask the governor on Monday when the state would update its guidance to be consistent with the CDC. He said that an update was expected to come on Wednesday, tomorrow, although that does not mean that that update will be any change in the guidance. If nothing comes from the DOE, I know that some districts are planning, including West Orange, to resubmit reopening plans and kind of de facto, see if the state will approve them. It's, I guess, a de facto updating of the guidance. Is that something that Verona has considered or would consider?
So, thank you, Mrs. Gagas. That's an excellent question. And that is something that we are also considering as well. We're following, as we've always said, the Department of Health guidance. But the Department of Education is the entity that we submit our proposals to, the reopening plan to, and in communication with our county officials, our county executive office for education. So that is something that is on the table for Verona in order to get further clarification. So we're going to make sure that we exhaust all of our options.
With that, I show no further public comment.
I'd want to thank the public for your questions and Dr. Dini Cio for your responses to the public questions. I want to remind, before we break for private session, I just want to remind the public that the next meeting is on Tuesday, April 13th, beginning with confidential session at 5:30 and a 7:00 PM public session. And now, before we break into confidential, I do need a motion to, for the board to resolve into move by Mrs. Drappi, second by Mrs. Prisco. Is there any discussion? And then can we do an all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, the board is going to sign off and go to meet in private session. We anticipate at least a two-hour private session and then we will adjourn the meeting officially after that point.
With no action.
With no action to be taken. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And with that, good night, everybody. Thank you very much. Good night.